All right, 6:30, I will call the April 6th, Planning Commission meeting order, first order of business, Pledge and Allegiance.
Pledge and Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item after Mike's is approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Entertain a motion?
All motion.
Say it.
It's been a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, just going forward, if you could say who does the first and the second for minute taking?
Sure.
That will help.
Sure, that was a motion by Ryan and a second by John. The consent agenda, next item of business, we've got the meeting minutes from the March 2nd meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
I think there's a question if
Oh yeah, there was a question.
if it was correct as written, which I believe it was.
I think it is, yeah.
So I'll second Paul's.
So I've got a motion by Paul and a second by John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving on to item number five, open forum, open forum is limited to three minutes for non-agenda items. Is there anyone here for open forum? Do I just move on from that?
Oh, sorry.
Doesn't look like there's anyone online, but. All right.
Good to go.
All right, moving on to agenda items, item six, council updates.
Good evening, Planning Chair and members of the Planning Commission, I guess I'll give the council update because our council member isn't here, I kind of planned on that, so I grabbed my notes. My name is Zach Dowd, City Administrator, City of Dayton, so I am, so the March 14th one, it wasn't a whole lot related to Planning Commission, it was actually quite a quick meeting, we're actually out of here, I think at like 7:15, which might be the quickest meeting we've ever had on record. Everything was on consent agenda, there was one interim moratorium, so we did pass that based on your amendments, basically, so that was the one item that was on there related to Planning Commission. It went very quickly, there was basically no discussion on it at all, we did amend it to exclude the Stensley property, which I believe was the recommendation of the Planning Commission, unless I'm mistaken on that, but I'm fairly certain, with all the mixed-use zoning area that the Stensley property encompasses, any questions on that item?
I think, and that was for six months?
That was for six months, yep, so that is a six-month interim moratorium, it will end on September 14th, or it can be rescinded early. And then March 28th, not a whole lot again, I mean, there's a lot of things going on, so we had a ton of those improvements that you guys had talked about on the March 2nd meeting for Planning Commission. We had the comprehensive plan amendment for OPUS that was passed by Council 5-0, we had the Semstone CUP, IUP and site plan, again, that was passed 5 to 0. The MTL final plat, that one probably had the longest amount of discussion to it, and it did end up passing 3-2, and then the Dayton Mini Storage CUP and Site Plan passed 5 to 0. So all of those amendments and items all did pass, otherwise, there was some resignations that we had that we're dealing with within City Hall, so City Hall is at bare minimum staff currently, so we are running on bare bones, but still limping along. And that was about it, any questions from Planning Commission on those items or any other discussion?
I assume there's a congratulations in order?
Sure.
To you?
Thank you so much, appreciate it, happy to be here. Yeah, although not, that's about it, again, my item's minimum, so, minimal item for me, it's just normal business, any other questions?
Get your work cut off for Peter Fass, this meeting on record by City Council, do you want them to have that?
We're, we're five minutes in, we're ahead of schedule here, so.
All right, let's do it.
Trying, trying to work it, so, thank you so much.
All right, moving on, item number seven, public hearing for the Burnham IUP.
There we go, all right, thank you, Mr. Chair, tonight you do have the Burnham interim use permit, applicant Brian Burnham, they're present tonight. It's located at 14080 Kingsview Lane, which is the property right on the corner of Kingsview and North Diamond Lake Road, it is a 4.35 acre site, guided low-density residential, and it is currently zoned AG1, so the top map is the zoning, bottom map is the future land use guidance. It is in the 2030, or MUSA, Urban Service Area staging area, so not slated for services for a little while. The site plan, you'll notice there's two kind of boxes or rectangles, the accessory dwelling unit is the 24 by 25 structure, which is 600 square feet. Then there is an 88 by 40 accessory building shown that is attached to it, that's 3,520 square feet. These are located, the north side is Diamond Lake Road, Kingsview Lane is over here on the west side of the property, the existing home is off of Kingsview on the south side of the lot, so it is to the rear of the home, the structures. Because they are in the A1 district, there is no maximum accessory structure size, so the limit for structures or surfaces as a whole is more limited to the 10% impervious surface maximum for that A1 district, and so that would limit it based on, you know, pavement of driveways, homes, structures, anything that's a hardcover that would be considered impervious surface. So with that, the applicant did submit square footage calculations for impervious surface, showing that they were under that 10% maximum, and that'll be verified with the building permit survey that would be submitted to show where the building's located on a survey. So the accessory dwelling unit is proposed to use metal siding and a metal roof, the colors are the two colors I have on the slide, so it's kind of a beige, tan-ish is more, I think, the color, I think this is coming through a little, not quite as accurate as it was on the other one, and then a black color. So the style does appear to match the principal structure, but we didn't receive any elevations of the existing home or pictures of the existing home, so there is a condition included to verify that the colors and the style of the building do conform or match to the existing home, as that's a requirement for both accessory structures and for accessory dwelling units. As well on the elevations, you'll note that the accessory dwelling unit and the building as a whole are about 18 feet tall, which is the maximum accessory structure height, there weren't, there wasn't an elevation shown on the drawings, so that's just confirmed with building permit, again, it is two stories for the accessory dwelling unit and then one single story in the accessory structure. Floor plans, I tried to blow up the upper and lower level floor plans as much as possible, on the left-hand side, you'll see the accessory dwelling unit down in the south, or bottom of the page, I guess, which would be the west side of the structure, it shows, you know, typical living spaces, living room, bedroom, bathroom, closet, kitchen. There are some of the, some facilities, like a staircase, laundry, fridge and bathroom, shown inside the accessory dwelling, or the accessory structure. City code doesn't prohibit some of those facilities from being in the garage area, however, I'm, as through the building permit process, the building official would confirm whether that's allowed through building code, electrical code, plumbing code, because all of that would have to be in conformance with that, as it's utilized, or there is an access to it from the accessory dwelling unit. So through that, this would have to comply with the Minnesota State Building Code. What you'll notice too is that the access to the upper level floor plan is actually through that garage structure, so the staircase is interior to the accessory structure, then goes up to a loft area and then study bedroom, and there's an opening on that upper level as well. So these are all floor plans, the, as far as the accessory dwelling unit with the interim use permit goes, there's no limits on what you do or how you lay out a floor plan, that would be dictated by the Minnesota Building Code, so that would be reviewed at a building permit when that came in, to make sure they're conforming with, you know, accessibility standards, Minnesota State Building Code, electrical code, plumbing code, things like that.
There's a circular stair that goes up too in that opening.
Oh, yeah, I guess that doesn't show as very, as well, but there is that access to, from the inside of the structure that I wanted to mention. As part of the interim use permit, I just highlighted a couple of things from the packet that are kind of unique to the ADU use, there's no rental license allowed with an accessory dwelling unit, so the city won't issue an accessory dwelling unit a rental license. Kind of going along with that, an ADU can only be occupied by a family member or extended family member, that's one of the conditions of receiving the interim use permit, and this interim use permit, as a condition in the code, does expire when ownership of the parcel changes. Now, some of the, that can be kind of confusing, but so, the owner is required to notify the city when a property changes ownership, when you have an interim use permit for an ADU, and even if that doesn't happen, the city can always check in on interim use permits to make sure it hasn't changed hands. When the use would cease, you wouldn't have to eliminate the structure as a whole, just the new owner would have to come back in for an interim use permit to then continue that use if they wanted to use it for that purpose. Otherwise, the building would, could no longer be used as a dwelling, if it changed hands and you didn't apply for an interim use permit after it changed hands. One of the other ones is that no commercial operations or home businesses or home occupations of any sort can be conducted within that accessory dwelling unit, so the city wouldn't permit any type of business operations out of that dwelling. So with that, the role of the Planning Commission tonight is to review the quest, discuss it, it is a public hearing, so we'll hold the public hearing and then make a recommendation to the City Council, who is expected to hear this item at the April 26th meeting. With that, that's all I have for the PowerPoint, so if there's any questions for staff, take those at this time.
Some neighbors were notified properly, you know, neighbors had notification of this, public hearing and
Yeah, it was published to adjacent properties and within the paper and posted on the city's website.
And, and the reason this is being an IUP versus a CUP is because it is the accessory dwelling unit?
Yeah, accessory dwelling units are listed as an IUP for the districts they're allowed in, in the city code, so yeah, we have to process it as an interim use permit.
Mr. Chair, I've known the applicant for several years, our kids play sports together, I don't believe that I have a conflict of interest.
Same goes for me, kids play sports together, so, just so it's noted.
Fair enough, I think the other the other question I had as it related to, so accessories, you mentioned something about accessory structures matching the principal building, is that true for all of our buildings in the A1 district?
A1's a little unique because it's different than your R1 and your R1A and your R2 and your RE, because those districts have that set requirement that you can't have post-frame construction, and so you have to build them to a higher standard essentially, as post-frame is, it's not, I guess it's not, it's just different, but it's not a style we allow in the R1 and the R1E. The A1 does allow post-frame construction, so the matching can be, the materials don't necessarily have to match one-to-one in terms of like brick and brick, they can, as long as they match in color and overall style, and that's kind of, it's a very vague terminology in the code, so it's kind of up to interpretation, and then, in that, it doesn't have to be material matching, but I would say that the colors for sure have to match.
But our, our code requires buildings in even A1 to, to color match of some sort?
Right, and it's a condition for accessory structures, and that's also a condition in the accessory dwelling unit, because there's kind of two pieces of the code that are reviewed with this application, yeah.
Okay. So, so if I lived in A1 and I wanted a red barn, and I have a brown house, I'd have to have a brown barn.
That's the thing, is like the, as long as it matches, so if it's a complementary color, that can kind of be, can still be considered matching, I think the intent of the code is to omit it from being a bright hot pink barn with a brown house, where they're not matching or the style isn't consistent, whereas if you use a similar color palette, you know, browns, blues, beiges, blacks, tans, those all kind of can meld together and look cohesive. But there's no set, you know, if you have this, this is what you use, there's no correlation between that, it's kind of open to allow a variety of materials that you could use to complement that existing structure, because a lot of times you build the accessory structure after the principal structure, and if you build them 20 years apart, the same materials may not be available and the same colors, and so you got to use what the market can provide too.
And, and part of the reason I asked that is to make sure that we, you know, is one of the, the things I ran on last, last time was, just make sure that we don't have any holes in our code that, you know, we're making these people follow that, other people don't, or vice versa, so, that, that was, I wanted to make sure of that, so, that was all.
We're not here commenting on the look and color of it though, right, I mean, based on what I'm reading it, that's not part of the IP, it's a condition that, yeah, yeah, but that's not for our review right now.
I mean, you can look, like the colors, I mean, you could comment on the colors, but they, they have the option to choose a variety of them, as long as we, as the city and by the Planning Commission and City Council make the finding that it is complementary or in style and nature to the principal structure, then it meets the, the criteria within that, and that can be done at building code too, because, or building, building permit, because some of these things, you know, you have, you start, but you haven't designed the entire structure, it's all the way through, so then that will come in with building permit.
Do we know the size of the house?
I do not, that would be a question for the applicant.
So I'm just
Square footage or height?
I have an idea based on what I measured for, to determine, because one of the criteria for an accessory dwelling unit is that it can't be greater than 25, you know, 35% of the main living, and it wasn't close on my calculations, but I don't know what the exact square footage is.
Sure, so where I'm kind of struggling looking at the code, so the, the ADU section of the code limits it to 300, 600 square feet per floor area, or 35% of the livable area in the house, and so, the way, and I don't know if I'm interpreting this correctly, but I'm looking at like, the total size of the ADU is 300, 600 square feet, whereas, you know, we're looking at 600 square feet per floor.
Yeah, because it's floor area versus like finished, total finished square feet.
Theoretically, you could have a basement, a first floor and a second floor, and, you know, now you're up to 1,800 square feet, which is about the size of a decent house.
Yeah, the way the code is written right now, that is possible, whether you choose to build a basement or not is another.
So I guess I'm interpreting, you know, the, the total area should be 600.
Of the to, so you mean finished square feet total, like, no matter how much, but it would either be 600 on one floor or 300 on two floors, is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, the way the code's written right now, it's 600 floor area, which doesn't restrict how many floors you use that on. So that could be, I mean, if that's a, an area that you'd like to revisit, we could certainly look at a code amendment for that.
Do, do we have any ADUs in Dayton, or is this the first?
I'm not aware of any.
We had one come before us, I think, three years ago, or two, two years ago, but that project fell through, I think we approved it at, at our level, and I don't know if it ever made it to council.
Was that the granny pod that was referred to? Yeah, I don't know whatever happened with it, but I remember the application.
I guess any more questions for staff? I'm assuming you're the applicant?
No.
Let's call the applicant forward then, if you'd like to, and.
So we have to open the public hearing?
I, I would like to, I guess, procedurally, I'd like to let them come forward and then open public hearing, just in, give them a fair chance to state their case before, not that we have anyone on, but yet, but, give them a chance to state their case before, so they don't have to sit and argue against the public, but then, if, if procedurally in the future, then have them come back forward if, if there's more questions after the public hearing, but, thank you. If you'd like to come forward, state your name and address and
Sid Stan.
Whatever you feel comfortable doing.
My name is Brian Burnham, I live at 14080 Kingsview Lane, North Dayton, Minnesota.
I don't know if you have anything additional to what staff had for your project?
No, thank you for presenting, I, I don't know that I have anything to add, other than colors will be, you know, very similar to what we have now, everything we've done is to, you know, in, in coordinates with the code, as everything, you know, as, as everything's been written. Yeah, I, I, any questions?
I can think of, you know, I guess maybe a commoner question for staff, so, on the calculations for impervious service, like, you're, you're kind of maxing out everything you can do, which, like, I would do that too, but, that doesn't leave any, any other room, like, you know, you could never build a driveway out to, or a paved driveway out to the barn.
Correct.
So, you know, just to understand that, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we've kind of talked and discussed and thought about, you know, many things, and we're trying to, trying to make it work the best for all of us. That's all I can think of.
I guess, one of the things that, just a, more a question, all of the, the structures that are shown in the aerial, are those still existing, are you
Yep.
And you're, you're planning on leaving them and
Yep.
Not that I, yeah, it, I, just more of a curiosity question
Yeah, and everything
with the way the property functions.
And everything up now has concrete in it, so it's, you know, it's, regardless, it's still part of that surface, square footage?
Yep.
Can I comment? I don't really, except there's not any trailers, I'm, you are at Burnham, by the way, all the trailers that were in that photo are no longer there, so, if you look, there were, I think, two or three motorhomes sitting there and a trailer, that's all gone, if that's part of what you were asking on that chair.
Yeah, no, I, I can, I can tell that from the aerial that those are
Okay.
those are trailers or RVs or, or something, I was more looking at the, it looks like there's two, either a shed and a garage, or, or two sheds or two garages that are detached from the main structure, and that's, those were the two I was focusing on. One of the things that, that I had in the back of my mind, and this is something for, I guess, us as a Planning Commission, maybe staff and council when they weigh in on this, is to think about, I, I don't mind this project at all, but we had a very similar property off of 120, or 121 with, they had built a, they had built a, they had a horse barn, and then they had built a, a garage after the fact, and then when they sold the property, they were required to tear down one of the two buildings, it's a little different because that was zoned differently, and so, one of the things that, as you're proceeding with this project, that I'm going to caution you on, is to look at, and, and I would look at it in this mind of, is it reasonable to do a property split somewhere within the way you configure your building, such that this can become a new parcel or not, and it might make it easier to sell in the future. It's something that I, I was thinking about as I was reviewing this, is that, that property had to tear down one of their buildings, that sucks to tear down a building, especially when they, it was a really nice horse barn, and they had built a nice garage next to it, and that garage is still there, but the property owner wanted to sell after a number of years, and I think it was part of the, the condition, the CUP of that property, was to, when they built the one, to tear down the other. And I know there's conditions on the IUP of the use of this, but just think about in the future, if it, if it is feasible to, you know, build an addition on this and make it more of a residence than an accessory dwelling unit, and how, how that gets built out would be my suggestion, so.
Well, think of that, so Darren Brown had sent us all kind of his thoughts and to try to figure out how to summarize it in 30 seconds, and one of his concerns was if, you know, the, the area develops at some point in the future, is this project or this building going to have such a high value that it's going to stop develop, the property from developing? You know, and it's easy for you to say, you know, you're going to be here forever and then nothing's ever going to change, but, you know, we're, we're all temporary, you know, so thinking of, you know, kind of your comment, and this is more of a building code issue, is it possible that this could just be a standalone house?
Right, that was, that was my thought, kind of, not necessarily reading Darren's comments initially, this was my thought based on the property that was down here for sale, I don't know, must have been five, six years ago, and it was a really nice property, it was really nicely set up, and can it be split in such a way, and it, it looks like it could be, it looks like to not tear down the, the investment that you guys are doing, so.
We, we were told that, that our property wouldn't be able to be split in, however, because of the access off of North Diamond.
Understood.
Oh.
Understood the current access, so currently you, you have your access off of Kingsview, what if the parcel to the east ADU develops before you guys get into development, can your structure be adequately added on to to become a, a single unit, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, okay, okay.
You know what I'm saying, it's future development, yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm, I thought you were saying to split, to split it now.
Just to consider, consider your, the way you build it
Yeah.
in, in that way, would be my recommendation, it's not by any means a condition, it's just a That was all I really had on this.
I don't have any questions for the applicant.
Ryan?
No, I, I was happy with everything I saw, I don't have any questions about it.
John?
Yeah, not really, I mean, it's more so, you know, I'm more curious of how the building official's going to interpret, you know, things, so just to be very clear of what is the, you know, if it's 600 square feet per floor, you know, this is where the house stops and the garage or the barn begins. You know, so like on the second floor, you have a loft listed, and that's, you know, definitely part of the, the building, not the ADU.
Yep.
I guess with no other questions or comments from staff, or from Planning Commission, I'll open the public hearing at 6:58.
Mr. Chair, there's no one on the Zoom call.
All right. All right.
Lot of angry neighbors on this one.
Yep. And I will close the public hearing at 6:58. I guess, does anyone want to go through the the conditions of the IUP? Any more discussion?
I think that, just to recognize the information that Darren sent to the planning commission, I know that is probably not public on the email he-
I mean, if you want to bring it up, it can become-
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to read it. But I think just, you know, his concern was orderly development, and this is in the 2030 staging plan area, which could be only seven years away, but it could also be 2039, right? Like, I also feel like in this area, development's going to keep marching south or north of Diamond Lake Road with River Hills and all the other development that's happened. There's a lot more, you know, planning with that master planning. Master planning area that was established, that that area is all going to get built out before anything hops to the south of Diamond Lake Road. And it seems like, just based on how long it's taking to do the current development, that it's not going to get to the south side of this road anytime soon. So I guess I recognize Darren's concern about orderly development and concern that maybe this could potentially, you know, create an island within a development, because the Burnham family might not want to sell when developers come by. And I guess I'm just, I support the property rights of, you know, the current owner and doing what they want to do with their land with what the code allows, so that's where I stand.
It looks like on Kingsview, there's, it looks like six individual properties on there too. So there would have to be kind of a collection of homeowners getting together to make that change in order to make enough land right in that area become available to really start doing like broad development around that property.
I also find a lot of value in maintaining some of these four or five acre lots in Dayton, right? I mean, we're supposed to be a farm rural community, and if we start just allowing all these houses to get chewed up for developments, starts to lose that.
Yeah, I mean, for, one of the things that Darren brought up is if this is appropriately zoned for A1, and I don't think it is. I mean, it's not an agricultural use, so that's something we should look at at some point.
I guess where I struggle with that is we don't require, we don't require the zoning change for this to happen. So it is an A1 property. It's allowed, it's allowed to do this on the property with the IUP. It has nothing to do with zoning. So that's where I struggle with, isn't appropriate use. That's not our question tonight to answer.
You mean like the size of the building?
Correct. That's something if we want to discuss at a future meeting, that we should dwell on then. These guys are currently compliant, they're currently in A1, they currently brought something forward that we just need to approve. Or not. So.
Yeah.
I think the two things I struggle with on this, on this one, and it relates back to my comment of, you know, can the, it relates back to both my comment for the applicant of just think about how you want to build it so that maybe you can split it out someday. And within this, you know, within this IUP, I get an accessory dwelling unit like we saw previously with the granny pod, where it's something more like a tiny house that's more mobile, and it gets moved out after the fact. This is a significant investment that these people are making on their property. Do we want, do we want to limit them to, I agree, maybe it should be a family member. But, you know, do we want to limit them to some of those conditions that we have in the IUP? And I, I don't know if the applicant is concerned at this point about that. It's just something that I noticed with the significant amount of improvement on this.
That's part of the ordinance though, you know, so the idea that it's never going to be a rental property.
Yep.
Yeah, it's trying to keep rentals out. The main of 10, right?
Yeah.
But, but at the same token of, okay, well, the, in 50 years, family still owns it, but it's not being used, then what happens? And now we have a building that's going to, you know, more or less going to the wayside and just collecting storage versus it being a property that can be used. And that's, that's, it's something I was struggling with on this one. It's going to be better maintained if there is someone living in it versus not. And that's where my head was. So. That was the only thing on the, that I had on. I'm not, yeah. I'm not bent up over it. It's just something that I was thinking about as I was reading through this. The other one was, I guess, maybe it's the same fashion as when it sells, the IUP goes away. Can the new owner, this is a question for, if they were to sell the property after this is built, can the new owner then apply, come in and apply for an IUP?
Correct, yeah, they could apply for an IUP to use the, it would be an existing structure at that point for an ADU. And it would just change to the new property owners. The IUP would be in their name versus the Burnhams' name.
Okay, so that wasn't, in the staff report, that wasn't clearly, so that's, that maybe solves one of my thoughts with this, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's no guarantees it would be approved in the future, but, I mean, that's a risk that the buyers are taking.
Yeah. And that was my thought, asking if this had to be an IUP or if it could be a CUP.
Oh, I think in the code, it's just as an IUP.
The code, it's allowed by IUP.
Yeah, correct. We have to process it as an IUP tonight, because it's listed that way in code. We could always revisit and consider changing the code to allow it as a CUP if that's something that planning commission and city council wish to do.
I'm going to make a motion for approval. I think the staff report had asked for findings, and the findings are pretty much written in the, one of the sections of the staff report.
Correct, yeah.
I don't have any added conditions. I just have a, you know, note for staff that, you know, to be diligent as far as where the, how to define the difference between, or the change between the ADU and the accessory building.
John made a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
A motion by John and a second by Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? This will go to the council.
Yeah, April 26th.
April 26th. Great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to item eight. The Historic Village Framework Plan Discussion.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the planning commission. I am here on behalf of the EDA to ask a few questions. Darren was able to dissect them from the conversation at the EDA meeting, which is good, because sometimes they be difficult to identify the questions that the EDA is asking. But what the EDA is asking for is some information that the planning commission is looking at from this Historic Village Framework Plan that was done in 2004. It was adopted in 2005 and basically was shelved since then. It has never been revisited. Any part of the Historic Village Framework Plan that you read there tonight, nothing has been done. No action committee has ever been established. Nothing has been done, period, in the Historic Village since the project was done. There was a study done by, oh my goodness, I'm going to forget the name of it now. There was a study done overall from a bunch of planners that was done around 2015, 2014, that came in and did a bunch of work. I cannot remember the name of it right now.
Was that the Dayton by Design?
Yep.
Minnesota Design Team.
Yeah, Minnesota Design Team, there it is. So they did that stuff in 2014 and did identify very similar items that the Historic Village Framework Plan had done in 2004. But again, nothing was done with that Minnesota Design Team thing. There was a few things adopted from it, but related to the Historic Village, there was nothing done to date. So the four questions that they are asking, which were dissected by Darren, were, are the land uses appropriate in the framework plan for the Historic Village, specifically the high density areas? The EDA had a bit of concern about having high density in that area, just based on the roadways. The second question is, how do you think Robinson Street should look? Bump outs, trees, lights, on street parking, so on and so forth? Is there a value in having a parkway or a boulevard on Baxter Street running north and south? And the last question is, any other comments on the framework plan? So as you guys make comments, I will try to take my notes as vigorously as possible, and then I will provide them back to the EDA so that they can dissect and decide on what they'd like to do. All of these things will then be conglomerated together, brought to the residents down there to see what their appetite is for it, and then ultimately decided on by the council if they'd like to do anything moving forward in total with this area. If not, then it'll basically be shelved again and then revisited sometime later on, so. I will stand for questions and comments.
I have a question. So I know Darren had written a lengthy notes that I didn't have the opportunity to read them all, and I'm wondering if anyone can summarize them?
I'm actually going to echo probably a lot of his notes that were in his comment, which. Yeah, I guess I'll start off. So the, the concept as a whole for the whole Historic Village Framework Plan, it seems very nice. It's very well put together, and I have no doubt that the end result, if this were to all come to fruition, would be really impressive. The problem that I see with it is it feels, it feels really fanciful for the area. There looks to be a lot of, a lot of attention and detail in here into an area that I don't, I don't feel as confident that this is going to be like a future economic and commercial center for the city in the area, at least not anytime in the real near future. I don't see major traffic corridors near it that are going to, you know, bring that attention in. I think the only way to really bring that attention is to really produce medium and high density in the area, to really kind of get that foot traffic going in the area. But that brings in transportation issues, it brings in infrastructure issues, water sewer. We've already got some challenges in the city. We'd have to produce a lot more to be able to handle things like high density, medium density in the area. One way in, one way out effectively for traffic, right? We've got the bridge going to the west out towards Otsego, and then everything else is kind of heading either down Brockton as it comes out the end by the church, or it's heading down River Road on the way out. That means a lot of high density, medium density traffic that's going to be going for services not available in that area that are constantly transiting in and out of that area. On top of whatever, you know, attractiveness we bring into the area, or whatever attention we bring into the area from outside traffic coming in to make use of the facilities that are in there. So I think, I think I see some potential for some critical mass issues around just traffic flow. I think that stuff like the on-street parking would absolutely need to go away, because in order to deal with the traffic, we'd really have to find a way to make that traffic flow extremely efficient through those areas to make sure that we don't create kind of bottlenecks, people backing into these spots alongside the street when you've really got just that one kind of main throwaway where the traffic has to flow effectively through. The one part I really do like is that Crescent Park down towards the end, I think that's a great area down there that really highlights one of the big features that we've got in downtown, which is the convergence of the two rivers. And to me, I feel like the Historic Village Framework Plan should have kind of probably been framed a little bit more around how do we kind of protect the long-term viability and the sanctity of that area and the natural preserve that kind of exists in that area, rather than just piling a ton of people and a ton of amenities in there and bringing in all of the challenges that come with that. Again, the extra infrastructure, the potential for other damage and things just from the high volume of people going in and out of there. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of concerns, but the biggest concern to me at the end was how do we figure out how to pay for all of this? And we get to the very end of the document, and it goes into things like set up a TIF district, and the city start purchasing properties to start preparing for this. And it just feels to me like the city's looking at kind of moving into a position of being a land holding operation as well in order to kind of facilitate some of this. And I'm not huge fan of TIF districts, because I think the city needs to keep looking at opportunities with all of the growth and all the other agenda items and infrastructure needs. We need to keep bringing in revenue, and TIF is just, it's a, it's a good means to an end in the right areas, but it just feels to me like, like one more spot to just kind of push revenue down the road that we could probably look forward to seeing a little bit sooner and make advantage, or take advantage of sooner. So those are a bunch of, kind of my primary concerns from those things I've seen in the plan.
I'm trying to remember the history of this, so. You know, Jason and Zach, if you can correct me, so the EDA sold a property?
No.
No, okay. So we have an individual that wants to buy a property from the EDA for, was it like a townhome or duplex or something like that?
That is how this whole process started, yes.
Okay.
And now we're here.
There's one property that they own already, and they want the one adjacent to it, which is the one that's for sale then, correct? Is that the property?
That is the one that we own. So I did pull up the map here just so you can see the colors, the pretty colors on the thing. I did this for the EDA, and it actually has helped quite a bit with learning of who actually owns what properties on there. So basically I picked the, any owner, and that thing is driving me crazy, because every time, it drives me nuts. Oh my goodness. Did it more than one time. Six more times. So the red squares are owned by the City of Dayton, blue squares are owned by Lucero, green are Smith, and then that flipping thing.
Hey, you're on your record here.
I am.
Careful.
Said the flipping thing. But the square that we're talking about that you had mentioned is the top, the furthest north one on that screen there.
Furthest north.
Furthest north rectangle on red is the one that the city was marketing for sale. And so that is the one that brought about, it was probably about a year ago today, maybe a little over a year ago, that that was actually marketed for sale, or whatever you want to call it, acted on, that said they wanted to purchase it. Then it was sold, and then immediately rescinded, sold at the next council meeting. And we have gone back and forth with RFPs and sales and not selling it, and then doing this plan to try to figure out what we really want, and I think is the right decision, on making sure we do exactly what we're looking to do, and not just sell it to the highest and best bidder. So that is where we are at today. But the EDA has been tasked with it with the city, with the city council, in order to figure out that property. But I think the biggest thing for, before we make any decisions, is to make sure that we have this framework plan, which is why we're here today. Because this plan is what's going to set the stage for, if we sell one piece of property, we are then one piece of property behind on making this framework plan, if that's what we want to have happen.
I think if we're going to keep this framework plan and frame it, it's a very nice draw, you know, and all that. You know, so this property on the framework essentially is like row housing or townhomes, or however you want to figure it. It makes, to me, it makes sense that you have, you know, and I don't know the dimensions of this lot. If you can, you know, sell that corner lot and get, or that, the red line and get three or four townhomes, makes a whole lot more sense if you use the framework and you have the whole end of the street. You know, so to me, I mean, the city should be buying as many properties as possible, and it'd be much easier cohesive to do like one half block at a time versus lot by lot.
So let's, let's back up for a minute here and look at, look at the properties and who owns what properties up there. And what's in the, what's in the historic framework? And what, also what properties are in the downtown district? And my understanding is that that red property next up there, the rectangle, there is a plan to build a new home on that property. And what is the newest property or structure in that, in that district right now? And what kind of revitalization are we going to see in downtown by just rezoning or relooking at a, a future development without adding major infrastructure? Or without purchasing major properties or without putting in a TIF district? It's going to be by people building new homes and revitalizing the structures that are there. That's going to be, that's going to be how this is going to, it's going to be more of a grassroots thing. Where people are going to see, okay. where people are going to see, okay, buyer X bought this property, put up a new house. Maybe I should think about redoing my house or redoing my property, keeping up with the Joneses type of deal.
So then you're not going with this framework though, right? It's a totally different way of developing it.
Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
There is, there, just to answer your question, Chair, there is one new house being put in currently in the historic village. And it is on the bottom green square that you see on that screen there. The property to the left, which is a tiny sliver piece, there is a home being built on that property currently.
And prior to that, it's been a long time since one.
Yeah, that's, it's been a while.
Yeah. And that's kind of what I'm getting at is it's, it doesn't seem like there's been a whole lot of investment in this area from...
Anybody.
Anybody. And there's a significant property owner up there who had an opportunity to buy this property and didn't and could have done a major investment with it. And why should we be the ones at this point deciding that when someone else wants to revitalize it by just putting a home on that property? In the framework, it's a sketch. There's plenty of single families in that framework. There's plenty of twin homes in there. There's still a lot of room on this map in other areas to consider high density, medium density.
Yeah. I don't know how to, so the property owner next to it, Jason, did want to do this framework plan, basically. They were looking to put row homes in there, five or six attached homes on those two parcels, the blue one and the red one. Just so that you are all aware, that was the ultimate goal, was five or six. Five would have been detached. Basically, single level homes, the ones I can kind of think of at the moment for picture would be like ones in Ramsey that are along Ramsey Boulevard, I believe that's what the Ramsey is, that are very narrow and tall. Otherwise, attached townhomes, similar to what we have down on Bolson Point here, just down the road, would be on that area. Basically, row homes facing the river and then a tuck under garage behind it. That was what the plan was.
That's not executing the framework plan though. That's just developing parcels because, is it Levy Street? That, in the framework, that shows it curving and creating a park at the, you know, connection to Baxter Avenue, right? And so if these properties get just developed in their rectangular fashion, that totally blows away the ability to curve it out and create a new park, right?
It would be really close because that, like I said, I'm gonna, I'm trying to look at the framework plan, probably pretty close between the high density square and then and that townhome development to the right.
Yeah. It's two totally different trains of thought, right? What we're looking at in this framework is a clear cut. Full new infrastructure, rebuilding roads, utilities, everything, and then cohesively rebuilding the historic district so it has a look and feel to it. Recreating a fake historic district, essentially, right? And that's what I have a little hard time with because there's really, other than the church, there's not a whole lot for us to hang our hat on in this area. You know, maybe there's another building or two, but it's, there's not a lot to create. Like, if you wanted to make this like a little destination space, like downtown Wayzata or something like that. I mean, we need to turn our attention to the river. We need to not make it road-centric. We gotta forget, I mean, Robinson's an important corridor, but we shouldn't be developing on Robinson. We should be developing towards the rivers and making a river walk and connecting this, you know, this whole peninsula around the perimeter of it. But it has to be a holistic, like, clear cut redoing of the thing. And there's a ton of residents that live there that love that area and probably aren't willing to accept a full rebuilding of the peninsula. I mean, it'd be great to see more life brought to this area, but it is a residential area with a little bit of commercial. And so if we allow individual properties to develop, you're gonna get a hodgepodge. You're not gonna get a holistic design, right? So I mean, that's part of looking at this framework is how do you make that feel holistic and make it feel like it's a downtown district and not just an area where every resident decides to do something different and ends up looking like junk, to say it. But, you know, I don't know if a couple of row townhomes randomly placed is helping anything without really understanding how that connects to the next thing. You know, and if we wanna develop more parks and we wanna widen Baxter to create a corridor, I love that north-south connection in the framework, making like a little pedestrian greenway, connecting the two rivers, like that has to be done first almost in order to then set up individual property developments.
I just feel like it would take on a lot of investment from the city. And we've got a lot of other vocal areas right now too. We've got an interchange we just opened that's got a lot of activity going on. We've got a lot of talk about starting to draw that parkway up through the Deanlands and start to kind of build that connection towards Zane's Bar. And that brings it right through a lot of potential commercial area, or at least guided commercial area right now. And so I think, to me, that's much closer to a transit corridor. There's gonna be a better chance of drawing in some traffic going up through there. I think that that's an area that seems to be a kind of a higher priority in my mind for our investment if we were to need to put one somewhere at the moment.
You know, Champlin had kind of a similar plan and it took them fifteen, twenty years to actually make it happen. And it was just buying lots as they became for sale and tearing whatever was down there and just sitting on it for years and years and years. And I kind of feel like that's sort of the slow and steady commitment that I think would fit here. So I guess, you know, personally, I feel like, you know, yes, I think we do need something more than just this framework, more of a, you know, something that's definitely feasible. You know, with the kind of slow and steady of buying properties as they become available and just sitting on them until, you know, the economy and everything comes together where we can do something bigger. I would, you know, Dayton has a lot of character and I would hate to see something like, I'm gonna say downtown Maple Grove, where you sort of have that fake downtown where it's just that one building and it's a little bit broken up, but it still has that suburban, modern character to it. It's nice to have, you know, something that's old and doesn't look like it's, you know, fire code safe, but...
And new buildings, developers have a hard time making new buildings look like they're historic.
Yeah. So I mean, Dayton's, you know, the village has developed over, you know, a hundred, whatever, it's a hundred fifty years or whatever. I mean, it's, it's got character, but a lot of those buildings, I'm sure, you know, that are a hundred years old are long gone.
Yeah, I have to imagine the character of it looked a lot different fifty years ago.
Yeah, I'm sure it was a lot bigger.
Yeah.
You know, gas stations and other...
Yeah, I'd be interested in just seeing the framework. If we were to wanna push forward with something like this, I'd like to see more meat to it. I would like to see information that's gonna kind of talk about how we're gonna deal with the infrastructure needs going forward so that we've got some sort, it doesn't have to be a concrete plan, but at least an idea of how to deal with the capacity or at least judge the capacity so that we can see if it's gonna be reasonable for us to deal with. It'd be interesting to see analysis of how the traffic impact is gonna be if you do pile high density all up along that eastern edge of Robinson Street there that kind of goes away from the main part of the village. Because again, that's gonna bring a lot of traffic kind of back and forth through there. And I'd especially be interested in just kind of seeing more about, about how we plan to deal with kind of the financial impacts or how we're gonna kind of tackle that, rather than just, TIF district just sounds a little too easy to just kind of put it on paper. And I think that, especially if we're gonna be looking at holding properties going forward, we wanna make sure that we've, you know, got a proper return plan for some of that investment going forward.
Oh, the question on the density, so in looking at the comp plan, the difference between high density, medium density. The high density has a minimum of ten units per acre. The medium is six to twelve units. And so unless you're gonna build a huge, you know, skyscraper or something, there's not necessarily a big difference between high and medium. So I think it's, I think high density is scaring people unnecessarily, I guess. When I think of, you know, how big of an apartment building could you be, could be built on there, it's going to really depend on how many parking spaces he can fit. And that's going to determine how many units and what the density is. You know, so whether it's high or density or medium, I don't see having a huge difference between the two.
So, so let's just look at the questions that are posed to us there. Are the land uses appropriate in the framework for the historic village? High density on Robinson Street, or should they be changed to medium? John, you're saying not really? Doesn't matter?
I'm thinking developers are gonna look at it and say, I can fit X number of units, whether it's high or medium, this is the most I can fit.
Yeah, the one thing you are gonna run into, and risk of all, is that it's gonna be parking, it's gonna be your issue. You can't go down in this area. So typically, apartment buildings can do underground parking. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but the problem is the water table's so high here, you can't go down. Basically, it's, would hit water or you'd be in the...
I'd have to look, to be honest, I don't.
I'm sure it's got serious flood issues if you had basement underground parking here in this area, is my guess. That's gonna be your biggest concern with high density, for sure.
Well, in the framework, it says senior condo apartments and underground parking.
They reference it a couple of different times, underground parking through there.
I was wondering about that too.
I would be astonished if they're able to do it, to be honest.
And again, they might have been referring to further down the river. Okay, I don't know if that, if it sits a little differently down there, but would need some review.
I think true high density would be a challenge, almost anywhere down here.
So almost more of a medium density is what we're envisioning?
Yeah. I'd hate to have a bunch of townhouses though. I just don't, that's a good fit for here either, but you know, small part of the village.
I mean, every time I drive through it, I just, I see the, I see the existing kind of, the properties that are there now. And I mean, I see it as being newer than that, but I'd never really drove around there and thought, let's pile in a lot more density than what's in here right now. I figure if we were to revitalize it, we would wanna look towards bringing some small scale commercial opportunities in and then bring other attractive opportunities in, like the park and other things to interact with the rivers there and use that to drive some attention back in. But it would just be at least lower volume kind of traffic and attention coming in.
Yeah, think of the row homes and townhomes or whatever. I mean, you know, the standard of being twenty-four, twenty-five feet wide. You know, I don't remember how, no, I guess I never knew how wide a block is. But I mean, to me, that's still medium, I think of it as medium density housing, you know, versus an apartment. But, you know, if you had an apartment, you still have, you know, yeah, I guess I don't, you're doubling parking potentially, but you know, you're, I don't think we're going to have a four or five story apartment building just because of the need for parking.
It might be more like the rural townhomes that were put in just up here on South Diamond, right? Like where you have the front door opening up to the street and it's a walkable community area and there's maybe a little convenience store or something like that in the area.
So I guess, I guess with that, if that's what we're thinking on Robinson is something like that, moving either direction towards the river, would you wanna see then more density? Or would you wanna see less density so that you get the vision, you get the feel and the embrace of the river? I mean, personally, I'd rather see less as you get closer to the river.
I like the idea of lower density also.
So, so medium density kind of on Robinson Street and as you move either direction towards the river, potentially gets lower density.
Which turns into more green space then, right? So it gets more of that river feel as you start to approach the natural amenities.
I don't know if the density would change a whole lot. Because I think of, you know, Levy Street, like that's gonna be the desire of, you know, having a house or townhouse or whatever that looks out onto the river. You know, so if I'm going, you know, two or three stories along Robinson, I'm definitely gonna go two, maybe three on the river, you know, just to have that view. So, you know, I don't see the density changing a whole lot between Robinson and anywhere else. You just think, you know, if you think of like a, you know, older, you know, New England or wherever, you just have density packed in wherever it fits.
And I guess the reason I bring that up is in the framework, it's showing more apartment buildings north and south, right? And so...
I have the view for everybody else, you know.
And it'd be this grander thing as you approach the river. And I look at it as either, well, either the senior, the senior living center on Dayton River Road in Champlin or the apartment building behind it, they were beautiful views before, even with single family homes. And now you see that apartment building there and you don't see the river at all. At least before, you could drive by and kind of peek around the houses that were there. And when you start looking at more density, you don't get those, even if they're just little peaks of the river. So I'm hearing, I'm hearing for the first question is maybe looking at more medium density throughout the old village. Lesser density is probably a little bit better. I mean, we're not gonna get, even if we did a TIF district, we're not gonna get all the willing sellers along some of the single family homes up in the area to go into it. So you're still gonna have some residential in here.
Yeah, I mean, the TIF is gonna pay for, you know, the sewered water and streets and... That's what it's for.
Right. So there is still single family mixed in with the medium density, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
I think it's inevitable. I mean, otherwise you're literally kicking everybody out.
Yep.
Yeah. They're just redo it.
Robinson Street, how should it look? Bump outs, trees, lights?
Yes.
I think, yes, but I think, you know, to Ryan's point, it's gotta function as a roadway. You know, the parking, I think, is going to have to go. So right now, the property lines, it looks like go right up to the sidewalk. And so there's really not a whole lot of opportunity for, to do anything on the sidewalk of putting, you know, street furniture or garbage cans and benches and all that, unless you go into the street and take out the parking. So...
Yeah, I mean, this won't ever be two lanes each way, right? So then it's a matter of, do you preserve the street parking or do you use that street parking to make it more pedestrian friendly?
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I think, whether it's parking or not, and depending on the type of development, it would be nice to widen the sidewalk and add trees and make it more of a boulevard feel. But you can't, you also wanna have a buffer between cars that are going thirty-plus miles an hour and people sitting at tables, right? Like, so it's a tight little spot. But I mean, if there's new development, you know, they don't have to go to the zero lot line and build right up to the edge. They could, you know, on their development say, well, we're gonna take an extra ten feet, step back so we have more room for pedestrian space or something, you know.
Do you have anything to add? I've got a couple of interesting tidbits on that one that I think makes sense. So if we look at what wants to be along Robinson Street, more medium density, maybe some commercial mixed in there, some mixed-use stuff. And we look at the buildings that are currently out there and what we like and what we don't like, most of the buildings have either a good offset on the south side or they're single family homes on the south side. On the north side, you kind of have the commercial buildings already. You have the McNeil property. You have the liquor store. If I, if we were to see this roadway expand, to me, it would be to the south. And, and so that's, to the north doesn't seem to make sense. There's also, you're also, you have two blocks to the south before you get to the Crow where you only have one block north where you get to Mississippi. And if anything were to happen on that corner coming around by the church there on the property we own, you know, soften that corner a little bit, maybe the, you know, maybe a thing to look at from a roadway alignment standpoint. But it's, there's not a whole lot that, if you were to do anything on the north side, I wouldn't do anything. It'd be all in the south. To make the improvements that, you know, if they were warranted, you know, making it more bikeable, walkable, trees, whatever, the pedestrian amenities are great. And that really makes it feel safer and easier to walk around in. So I'm in favor of them all. It's just, you can't always fit everything you want into the right way you have. So if we need to expand right away, look, my recommendation would be, consider where you want it to go. Parking, I think, is dependent on the uses. And if it's a bunch of residential and... and, we're, we're, if we're not encouraging any commercial down here, I, I don't think there's a whole lot of need for parking at all. If there's commercial or, and/or some of the commercial uses exist, we're gonna have to figure out what parking's gonna do, but it's not a huge concern, even if it's the same uses that exist.
I think, you know, on, so Baxter is kind of on, on the framework as being like this parkway.
Yep.
And, you know, I don't know if it needs to be as grand as it, as what it's drawn on there, but, yeah, you think of like a downtown Robbinsdale has, um, I don't know if it's a street or if it's an alleyway, it's a little offshoot with the diagonal parking. And I know Chaska, downtown Chaska has something similar, so you've got the main road that goes through there, and then along the side street is, this is the main public parking for it.
Yep, yep.
You know, that makes sense on Baxter or one of the other side, well, more on Baxter than I guess on the other street. 'Cause that kinda opens it up, and then there's your view of the, the river and the, whatever park that's gonna be along the Mississippi. And then it lines up with the, the future walkway bridge to Slap Town, too. So I, I remember that from the design team.
I gotta wait till other comments before I can talk about that one, I think, 'cause we're still on Robinson, right?
Well, yeah, I guess, I don't.
Yeah, no, I just, I, I think the, I think the Baxter idea is, is actually pretty, pretty decent, after, uh, after the comments I had about the rest of it, but I think that, yeah, to, to, I'd agree with John, I think it's a little too much, maybe, heading down that way. Whether or not we do that, that bridge over to Slap Town, I think that there still could be, uh, even if we don't do the bridge Slap Town, I think there could be some sort of feature there that's opposite this Crescent Park, that could be a piece of that walkway, so you can get kind of a view of the Mississippi, view of the Crow, I mean, that's, that's obviously an option. I'm, I'm confused by the, by the path over to Slap Town, um, I'm just, I'm just curious to the.
So from memory, there used to be one. Um, I don't, I don't know what decade it fell down, or what it was, but.
I guess I'm just more curious of the value add that comes back with that, again, what's the, the, how much use is it actually gonna get? Is it gonna be more for the people in Slap Town to make their way over? Is it an attraction for the people that are coming to downtown to go to Slap Town? Does, does Slap Town want that lock traffic, walking traffic coming through their area? It's primarily all residential. And so, I guess, yeah, if, if the, if the concept is at some point later that Slap Town's gonna go through some renovation or some increased density, then it kinda seems like a, a nice corridor to bring in, but for right now, it feels like, I mean, there's a few handfuls of residential units down there right now, and it feels like we're building a big bridge across there for, what's, ten, fifteen, twenty houses?
Yeah, if you're not developing that area more, then all you're doing is inviting people into private properties.
Uh, yeah, exactly, so I think the idea of putting like a focal point right at where that bridge would have started, at the south end, so you've got something to like walk across this nice Baxter kind of, you know, green space, too, down there, and then you've got a, something else where you can sit and, you know, look over onto the Crow, I think that's a, you know, an area that could be something we could, we could take a look at to kinda meet the north-south kind of flow of that area, but to me, I, that, that's kinda the end of where I see that.
Yes, my, my opinion on Baxter, I mean, I don't mind, I don't mind the connection point if it's warranted to Slap Town, I'll say it that way, um, but I don't, I don't think there's a need to have it as a parkway. Maybe that's where your on-street parking is, maybe, like John said, that's where your, you know, maybe there's a, I, I, maybe you widen it and do forty-five parking the entire way of Baxter, and it's a one-way in each direction, so you're forced to drive out to the river and back around, something along those lines. I just, I don't see there's a, a need to do a parkway along there. That's just my opinion, though. I think the, the money in that, and the investment in the landscaping would be better spent along Robinson. Or along Levy Street in, in the park.
Yeah, I just think any investment that we're gonna, we're gonna put as a city into the area needs to be, needs to be approached carefully, just 'cause we have a lot of other investment coming up as well, 'cause we're hitting a, a few major thresholds, population-wise, where we're gonna be coming up on, you know, in, new infrastructure, water sewer needs around, we're gonna have development, I, I think at some point will start to, start to pick up again, and we'll have to see, the economy's in an interesting spot at the moment, but I think we have a lot of other investment opportunities that are gonna be coming up in our future, too, so we just wanna make sure that we don't over, over-leverage too quick for something that's not gonna provide a, a quick or a decent return.
So I guess the overall question is, where, where are we in priorities?
You guys are doing a great job. I think I got most of the information, at least for one, two, and three, with the Baxter stuff, I think those are great comments, back to the EDA. The last one is, yeah, do you have any other comments related to the framework plans you guys wanted to make sure that the EDA hears? Other than that, I guess it provided exactly what the EDA was looking for tonight. Again, it's not gonna be finalized at all, so, uh, for now, until later on, but just getting comments back to the EDA is gonna be the first focus.
Is there any pressure that the EDA is under to, to do anything? Okay.
Not as in timeline, besides the fact that they want probably have it done and off their plate, but I mean, other than that, no.
Yeah, my understanding is the EDA wants to sell the property.
Sure.
And they've, they've made an, an agreement, or at one point, to sell it. I don't know what status that's in, but that's my understanding.
Yeah, so the, the only, so we have, basically, we have an RFP that's been approved, so basically everyone submitted a bid for the, for the land, that has been approved, it says, we, we would select this bid if we had the choice, but there's no, been no purchase agreement or anything else assigned at this point. As soon as we had that, again, it came up with, are we doing what's, this plan is showing? And then, and then it came up of, oh, we've never seen this plan, so why, what, let's have some comments on it before we act on it, basically. And if there is, uh, actual action done at the council level, and the council likes that movement, then obviously we'll bring back a finalized reversion to the, the planning commission to say, here's what we came up with after all the comments were made around, around Robin.
So my, my fear is kinda doing something, if, if we have, you know, uh, I'll call it a master plan, or, or, you know, this is just a pretty picture. If we're, if we're gonna make this happen, like, we need to do a lot more engineering studies or marketing studies of, of what's realistic, and I guess my fear is, you know, that all costs money, but my fear is if we do something prematurely and just say, well, you know, this is a great plan, but if it's gonna take twenty, thirty years to make it happen, you know, we could sell a property right now and, and get something in the ground and some tax value out of it. I think to do that is a little bit premature until we, you know, look at this bigger picture. So I, I guess my opinion is, I, I think we should still be trying to acquire property, not sell it. And in the meantime, you know, whether it's now, or, or, you know, five, ten years from now, is develop the framework further to, you know, what is feasible. You know, I, I don't know what the possibility for, so, right, this has sewer water through Atsigo, or is it?
Sewer, sewer through Atsigo. So the sewer is all collected and sent to Atsigo for treatment, the water is Dayton system, we have two wells.
Yeah, so do we have any, like, can you do more, or can we do more than what's on there now?
Not with the existing system, there would have to be upgrades, and of course, how much you upsize and increase density and uses, how big your upgrades have to be.
Sure.
Almost certainly would have to be a larger line all the way to Atsigo, which probably sounds worse than it is, it is a ways away, but it's not many miles away, so.
So, so I guess my, my comment back to, um, the, the rest of the planning commission here is, um, we saw, I believe, a concept, was it for, we had, we had Mr. McNeil come on behalf of Mr. Lucero for a, a concept on one of the properties in this area, and if you look at the number of properties that Mr. Lucero owns up here, and we wanna talk about a major landowner making an investment in this area, um, there is a large chunk of property, almost a full acre, um, across from the, the, uh, the, uh, church and community center, that is connected to another large parcel, um, or parcels, that seems like actually a, a decent spot if we were to go with a higher density, it's less off, what we talked about earlier was trying to keep lower density to the river, so you could still see the river views, it seems like it's less off of the river, um, it seems like a better possibility for something to go in, and, and investment to be made in this, in this area.
And what we don't know, so I mean, if there's three, four major landowners of what their vision is for this area, too.
And if we start buying up properties, too, how does that put us in line or in competition with them when it comes time to actually start acting upon that plan? Or what if they decide they do wanna hold out, now we've got half of the town that we own and half they own, and?
Yep, so I, I think the idea is to have, you know, so if, the framework is the basis of, is everybody buying into that, you know, and fully behind it, so then it's just a matter of, you know, people are developing as they are able to, but we're still working in the same direction. You know, just not at the same timing.
But there may be multiple people then, building new homes, or, or twin homes, or whatever else in this area, not just one.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand, I, I think I know what you guys are talking about, basically, but I'm trying to figure out, it's, I think what comes down to the question is always, is it the chicken or the egg that happens first? Do we have the plan first and have it done, or do we have them start developing, and then we say, oh yeah, that's working for us, let's do something like that? And the EDA's approach would be to have the, oh, I don't even know what you wanna call it, the egg first, probably, and have the plan in place of, do we buy this plan, which has been mentioned multiple times, with the revisions that we've talked about tonight, and so on and so forth. The individual landowner, uh, that owns the most land down here is interested in redeveloping, but the problem is that he doesn't know what to redevelop, too, because if he's willing to introduce and put in new things, he doesn't wanna do it and then get basically shot down right away, because it doesn't follow some sort of plan, because we haven't adopted a plan formally that all parties know about. I don't know how many people were involved in this store, if the framework plan back in oh-four, I don't know that answer, but, um, the individual wants to redevelop, and the idea would be to have, have an, or we are both working together to try to get this framework plan possible, as in both the city and landowners, to make sure that we're following each other and helping each other out, and not trying to compete, that is the ultimate goal.
I, I think it'd be in the property owner's best interest, then, to put, you know, put the plan together, or develop the plan. You know, I don't know if that's the, the highest priority of the city necessarily, but it should be for, um, the villagerian, for those property owners.
Correct.
And, and I think that's, that's my point, is, you know, if the EDA is willing to sell the, and wanting and willing to sell the one property, and the property owner next to it would like it, but look at all the other property that's out there that they could do potential projects on, without even needing the EDA property.
Right.
You, it's, it's much larger properties out there, and they, they haven't done anything yet, so the city needs to make an action, is, is. I think with that, unless, any other comments? Zach, you need anything else from us?
Nope, and if you, if you have any other comments that come to mind when you guys leave or whatever, just send me an email, and I'm happy to provide those to the EDA. Next EDA meeting is on the eighteenth of April, and after that, kind of discussion, they will put together something, I'll try to put together a, some sort of blob map, 'cause that's, I can't do these fancy architect stuff. I'll put together a blob map, basically, of the decided mixed-use, high-density, so on and so forth, to try to paint a little more of a picture of what the updated items would be, as best as I possibly can, on a back of a scratch paper, and then have a meeting with the residents on that, that's to be decided, so we'll let everybody know about that meeting when it does happen, but the idea would be to have residents involved in this process, so that we're not saying, are you even liking this? I mean, are you interested in all, in anything? 'Cause if we have a plan and it's basically, no one's gonna do anything, then I don't know why we're wasting any time on doing anything. We don't wanna spend months and months of time trying to figure out this plan, and then the residents say we hate it, we're never gonna do it.
I guess, I guess my, my last comment on that one is, if we look at the, the number of, we should do that sooner than later, because if we look at the number of parcels up there, why should the city be spending money to make a plan for someone who owns a number of parcels that is gonna benefit from it? That person should be doing it.
If we step to table, right?
Well, they should be paying, they should, they're gonna benefit from it financially.
Right, and bearing some of the.
And bearing some of the load, we should not, as a city, be bearing that load.
Yeah.
You mean of the plan? Or of the, of the cost of doing the process, once it, once we have a plan in place?
Well, if we're, if we're gonna study a redevelopment of, of the, of the area, and it's gonna benefit one major, one major property owner, that property owner should be, one, bearing a, a major load on the cost of the plan.
Yeah, you're talking about feasibility, stuff like traffic studies and, and infrastructure studies, stuff like that, that's what you're talking about.
All the other costs that we would, that we would, as a city, have to put into enabling that, that activity to start beginning.
Yeah.
City's gonna have to sell off that, those parcels to pay for it, otherwise.
And then buy them back when we line it off.
At twice the cost, please.
All right, uh, notices and announcements.
Oh yeah, the next, the next regular meeting is tentatively scheduled for May fourth. We don't have any items that were submitted in the April deadline for that May meeting, so right now, there's no items on that agenda. Staff will decide.
I have, we have one comment, are you guys available? Are you all available, March, May fourth, do you guys have any plans or anything else? I'm just trying to figure out, so we have to, based on the transportation plan amendments being done by council, uh, they would like to have a next meeting with the planning commission to figure out land use with comprehensive plan amendments, that they'd like to do as in the city council, so trying to set up a date for both planning commission and city council may be difficult, and if, without any items on the May agenda, may be a good time to do that, with some set across time. I would guess it's gonna be all of four hours, just to have a discussion about land use, 'cause it's not just land use in this store village, and I'm talking about now, this is the entire city land use from the comprehensive plans, so. Are you all planning on, on being in town on May fourth, is my question?
Don't worry, I'd rather be.
No, Star Wars.
That sounds like a good use.
He'll come dress as Darth Vader.
Yep.
We can put him in the background.
There'll be more information from me, if, if that's decided, so just let you, thank you.
As far as other notices and announcements, uh, staff has been meeting with a number of developers on concept plans, none have formally come forward with a concept plan, so I don't wanna reveal any information about them at this point, um, but they've all expressed interest in, uh, moving forward, for, I should say, the majority have expressed interest in moving forward, with a couple that are tentatively shooting for that May first deadline, so they would come in, and that would be then on the June planning commission meeting.
I'd say you don't wanna give out too much, any idea of quantity, though, is that, we're talking one, two plans, five, ten?
Uh, depends on if all of them come in, or if none of them come in, um, could be anywhere from zero to maybe three.
Okay.
But some of them are larger in nature, so.
And I'm assuming this would all be for twenty-twenty-four construction?
Yeah, anything that's going in for a concept plan, or even the first round with preliminary plot, would most likely not start construction until spring of twenty-twenty-four.
Slow year.
Sounds good.
Any more announcements from?
No. Make a motion to adjourn?
How about halfway second?
A motion to adjourn by Paul, and a second by Ryan, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting is adjourned.